All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council in order. Today is Monday, July 24th. If I can have everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag, please.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gangona?
Here.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of the public, if you wish to address any matter on tonight's agenda, please fill out a card and pass it up to staff, please. Thank you so much. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a presentation, and I have the presentation here. And if I can kindly call up Ms. Marie Bruswella...oh, there you are, okay.
I have the President also with me, so I thought it was appropriate.
Oh, yes, okay, the President?
David J.
How do you do, sir? Glenn Sylvester. Your name for the record, or Mr. David?
My name is David J. I'm the President of the Broadmoor Property Owners Association.
And I'm the Secretary.
No.
Just as important, Marie. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is a proclamation for, in honor of J. Wayne Johnson, who passed away recently. He was very well-known within the Broadmoor community. I'm gonna read a few of the "whereas." Wayne Johnson was born in Star City, Arkansas, April 3rd, 1940. His family moved to California when he was a young boy. He graduated from South San Francisco High School in 1958, and later went to work for Pacific Bell and retired in 1991 out of 32 years of service. Due to the lack of funding and the closing of the Broadmoor Police Department, Wayne used his own funds to pay for the insurance and other expenses to reopen the Broadmoor Police Department as a gift to the community. Wayne received the Citizen of the Year Award from the Broadmoor Property Owners Association for his outstanding service and support of the Broadmoor community, and he was later hired as a police officer for the Colma Police Department, and then he was promoted to Police Lieutenant. I'm skipping over a few things here, but everything is very, very important, but we're going through, which I think are very important highlights, they all are important. He served...Wayne served on the Board of Directors for the Broadmoor Property Owners Association for the past 10 years, and he was also the Treasurer from 2013 until his passing. He also served as the Acting Police Chief, and later was promoted to Police Chief for the town of Colma until his retirement in 1999 due to a severe back injury. Now therefore, I, Glenn R. Sylvester, Mayor, members of the City Council, City of Daly City, do hereby proclaim July 24th, 2017, as J. Wayne Johnson Day in Daly City, in recognition of his 50 years of dedicated service supporting Broadmoor Village, Broadmoor Police Department, Broadmoor Police Commission, Broadmoor Property Owners Association, Colma Police Department, Colma Fire District, and local schools and the community. Thank you so much, and...
Thank you.[304.14][304.14](applause)
This is for the daughter.
Oh, for the daughter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Did you want to say...Marie? All right.
Did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Let me say something.
I just want to say that, on behalf of Broadmoor and Wayne's daughter, Stacy John Block and her family, we appreciate greatly Daly City's recognition of Wayne's contributions to the greater Daly City-Broadmoor-Coma community. He loved this place, and he did his best every day. He might have seen a little gruff, but his heart was always there. He loved Broadmoor, he loved this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. J.[372.12][372.12](applause)
I would just like to say a couple of words. His daughter was unable to be here. She lives down south near San Diego. She's in the process of packing up and coming here to live in his home. He has two houses in Broadmoor.
Oh.
And so they're gonna fix it up, and one of her sons is probably gonna come and live in the other one. And she's really looking forward to meeting a lot of you guys, and I think she met you at the services. And to become a part of this community, because he loved it so much, and she wants to carry on his legacy. And one little thing I wanted to say, because we all think very highly of all our police officers, but as a Lieutenant, if anybody remembers who's been here long enough, maybe as long as I've been here, where Target is, it used to be Gemco.
Yeah.
And that's Colma, and there was a situation, there was a robbery, and he was called to go over there, and he was shot in the chest. And it was very lucky, he was very lucky, even though it probably knocked him for a loop for a while, he had a, what do you call it, a vest, a bulletproof vest. And for that, it just tells you how important the Police Department is, and how much they do for all of us. And he was, you know, a wonderful person, and we're gonna miss him immensely. But thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Ms. Bruswella.[454.12][454.12](applause) All right, anything further?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Ms. Christensen?
I would just like to make a comment to Stacy, to let her know that her father is greatly appreciated, he will long be remembered, and we look forward to welcoming her into our community.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Any other comments? All right, thank you so much. Request a motion to approve the minutes of both June 12th, 2017, and June 26th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
First, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. Request a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Next item is the consent agenda, and would like to obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With the exception of items 1, 2, and 10, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Anything further? Items 1, 2, and 10 will be pulled from the consent agenda, motion on the floor to approve the remaining items. We have a motion already.
So moved.
For, it was Councilmember Gangona who made the motion, second by Christensen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved, with the exception of number 1, 2, and 10. All right, do we...all right, so we'll start off with item number 2, adopting of composite summary memorandum of understanding and sap...
What about number 1?
Number 1.
Oh, 1, 2, and 10, right?
Yeah.
Why did I jump to number...okay.
Number 1.
Sorry, Mike.
That's money.
That's money. Okay, so, Ms. Christensen, we'll start with you. Item number 1, accepting and approving a $13,900 grant from the Daly City Public Library Associates. Mr. Pacelli, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for your support of the Daly City Public Libraries. Thanks to all the Daly City community for their support of the Daly City Public Libraries. Tonight, we are here with members of the Board of Directors, Pauline Fong Martinez, Jane Chambers, Marie Villarosa, and myself, to make this grant to the Daly City Public Library. Once again, the Daly City community at the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon came to the aid of the libraries. This money, $13,900, will be used to fund the replacement of the aquarium at the Westlake Library. Those of you that have been to Westlake realize just how important that aquarium is to the whole...to the whole community. I know Pat recognizes that. And $9,000 to the Bay Shore Library for improvements to the children's reading room there. So with that, that brings the total to about $147,000 that the Daly City Public Library Associates have raised for the libraries in Daly City, and that couldn't have been done without the support of local residents, members of Daly City Public Libraries, the business community, organizations throughout Daly City, and we are very grateful for their support and your support of the Daly City Libraries. So with that, Chayla, thank you. I'm gonna give these out.
No, thank you. These may seem like small things in the community, but they mean a great deal. The aquarium at the Westlake Library brings joy to people every single day, not just kids, the adults, you know, they're drawn to it, and it just makes them happy to be in that library space. And we're also really excited, we're gonna be able to do kind of a refresh in the children's room at Bay Shore, which, believe it or not, it's not a brand-new library anymore, so it's about time to do something fun, and one's in the middle of the kids' room, and I know all the kids over there are gonna really appreciate it, and we all really thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Pacelli, I'm sure there's going to be some comment from the Council, so if you would kindly stand by, and I would like the Board of Directors to come up and join your colleagues, please.
13...
Come on, don't be afraid. Okay, well, stop before we follow up there. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to Council at this time for any comments, if any. Vice Mayor?
I just wanna say thank you for your continued support to the libraries, especially in Westlake. I remember going there when I went to Ben Franklin Intermediate, and so it was really nice to see that there's continued support, especially around enhancing it, first with the teen room, and now with the aquarium, so thank you very much, and also enhancing Bay Shore. It's a tremendous help, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Christensen, anything?
It's never too late to join. I'm sure you guys have some applications with you this evening. So take a look at who's up here, make sure you pick up an application to join. I'm proud to be a member. And if you want to join, visit your local library, and there's always opportunities to join there and make contributions, no matter how big or how small, or always accepted to support our libraries. Thank you, and thank you, guys, for all that you do.
And membership only starts at $20.
That's...thank you, Pauline.
Yes, thank you. So let's say that a little louder in the microphone.
So $20 for a membership. Only starts at $20.
Excellent.
Now, let me, ladies and gentlemen, out in the audience and people at home, take a look at the people here that sacrificed their time and effort to make Daly City better. I think they should get a round of applause.
Absolutely.[860.12][860.12](applause)
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for Daly City. Appreciate it.
You are our library heroes.
I would just like to share a quick story, and, Mr. Pacelli, you definitely made it a point, because it's not only you folks, but it's the community at large, and everybody who participates in supporting the Daly City Public Library Associates. This includes the book sale that you have, and this is the first book sale I ever went to, and I just wanted to share this story with the public. I went in there, and I was graciously helped by Ms. Martinez. I just wanted to go there and say hi, but I walked out with a lot of books, some of them upstairs.
Sort of.
And it's funny, those books were so heavy, and I never shy away from a free donut or cupcake.
Yes.
So someone there at the event offered to carry the books outside for me and carry my cupcake, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't let it go. But thank you, thank you so much for what you do, and was it 147,000 over the years? Thank you.
Five years. Five years, we've raised $147,000.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay?
Let me just, one last thing.
Yes.
But up to the microphone, so people can actually hear it.
We do have an author's talk coming up...
Yes, Seton.
Sunday, July 30th. It will be at the Marie Mahoney Auditorium at Seton Medical Center, and we would invite everyone to be there, 4:00 to 5:30. It will be by Carl Black, and it will be a murder mystery that she will be talking about. But with that...
And there's wine and cheese.
And there's wine and cheese. And there's wine and cheese.
Okay, then, then I will go.
But most of all, thanks to you all for...
No donuts?
...our community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pacelli, and thank you all again.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is number 2, adopting of composite summary memorandum of understanding and salary schedules between the City of Daly City and specific employee organizations. And I'll turn that over to staff. Oh, Ms. Malby, good evening. Mr. Lou, good evening.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Shawna Malby, the Director of Human Resources, and I'm going to be talking briefly about the recent settlement we reached with the Police Officers Association and Police Management Association. They are two-year contracts. For the first year, we have cost-of-living increases, as well as equity adjustment increases for both groups. We also have a modest increase in the cafeteria plan. We have some cost-sharing, which means that for one of the raises, they will be contributing some towards the employer's share of per's retirement. We are converting their current holidays, they will no longer be eligible for holidays, but they will get holiday and loo pay. They will be given a bank of time for taking training. The City will be exploring a retiree health savings account, we're gonna be looking to do that, the meetings for that by January of next year. We've increased the callback time, and we've allowed some flexibility as far as deadlines for the educational incentive program and for court time. And Police Management mirrors it almost exactly, minus the court time piece. And I think of interest is the cost to the City, which I will hand over to our Finance Director, Lawrence Chu.
So now let's take a look at the POA. For fiscal year 2018, the impact to the City will be 1.9 million, and the second year is 3.5 million, resulting in a total general fund increase of 5.4 million over the next two fiscal year. For the PMA, the first year is $700,000 to the general fund, for the second year is a 1.2 million to the general fund, and the total two-year contract resulting in a 1.9 million increase in the general fund.
So if adopted, this contract for both the POA and PMA, if adopted by resolution by the Council, would be in effect for two years, and we're available to answer any further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malby. I have a couple of cards on this, but before I go to the cards, I'll open it up to Council if they have any thoughts, concerns, or questions of staff.
Yeah, I have some questions. So we're looking at an increase of expenditures of $5.4 million and $1.9 million in the next year and a half, 'cause half of this fiscal year and then the next fiscal year. My question is, what is the source of that money? Where's that money coming from?
General fund reserve. General fund reserve will be used to offset the salary and benefit adjustment.
So we are not anticipating an increased revenue to cover that expenditure?
Right now, it's based on the current budget. We have not put together the budget for the next annual budget, so no revenue assumption is building at this stage.
So I guess my real concern is, I don't know about all of you people, but I'm very fiscally conservative. I don't spend money I don't have, and I always have money in my rainy day account in case some crisis happens, and that's what our reserves are for. Reserves are for one-time emergency situations. That's that jar of money you keep in the back of your linen closet that, you know, when the car breaks down, you have to go to...well, in this case, when your city breaks down, or there's an earthquake or whatever, but now we're spending that money on continuing expenses, so salaries. So we've got the reserves to cover it for half of this year and all of next year, and no anticipated increase in revenues. Where's the money gonna come the next year after that? At this point, do we have any idea where that money's gonna come from, or would it continue to come out of what might be left of our reserves?
So the projected general fund reserve after the salary adjustment for fiscal year, we're looking at around 11.5 million. Is it only a projected balance? And for fiscal year 2019, the projected general fund balance after the salary adjustment is 6.8 million for fiscal year 2019.
So...
So the fiscal year 2018, that 11.5 million represents 14.5% of the general fund reserve, which is slightly below the Council-approved reserve policy of 15%. And for fiscal year 2019, the general fund reserve is projected at 8%, which is below the Council-approved general reserve policy of 15%.
So we'd be going from a 14.5% reserve down to an 8% reserve, and no guarantee that there's any more money coming in. So let's say at the end of fiscal year 1819, we were to have a major crisis, how many days could the City manage to survive and provide services on that 6.8 million that we would have at that point? How many days would that give us?
This is equal to around 30 days, around one month of operating reserve for the general fund operation, so it's a one-month reserve.
One month.
We better have good credit.
Well, if your reserves get that low, I imagine that affects your credit as well.
Same.
So I have a...I have a big problem here, is I don't think we should be spending money that we don't have. It's not that people don't deserve a raise, it's not that they are not worthy of it, but my question is, how can we afford to gamble with the future of the City? I'm very concerned. Thank you for sharing the numbers with us.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Mr. Gangona?
Okay, let me give you a little bit of my perspective, which is somewhat, it's similar to Judith's, but it's kind of tinged with a perspective of a lot of years of looking at budgets. When I first got here, our projected revenue on yearly basis was 3%, very conservative, and every year we could count on that 3%, every year. In 1993, when I got on the City Council, we used to do a one-year, every year, we would negotiate contracts with all of our different bargaining units every year, and it was workable back then. Years passed, we determined that we could project our budgets into the future, two years, and we were able to convince staff and our bargaining units that it would be in their best interest for us to go forward with two-year agreements. The point I'm trying to make is, is that in lean times, we've had to cut back, and we've had to...the overarching policy, or at least as long as I've been here, has been programs over, people over programs, okay? So we prided ourselves on this idea that we would cut programs before we would cut people, and so for all those years of being on the City Council, I was afforded the luxury of never having to lay anybody off, which was great. Things got tougher, and as things got tougher, you know, as you do in your life at home and budgeting, you know, your life expands and contracts based upon what you make, and whether you have a good year and whether you've had bad years. We've had a number of bad years, and we've had a number of bad years that have compounded and that put us in positions that, where we've had to make decisions that make us feel uncomfortable. And I'm not gonna speak for Judith, but I think I can articulate that what she had just said kind of gives her a feeling of uneasiness.
Serious.
To say the least.
Yes.
And it's something that we, that at least I have never had to face before, and that is this idea that we're gonna be going into reserves to pay salaries. That was the biggest no-no, that we, it was almost like a sacred cow. You never wanted to use your reserves to pay for recurring costs if you didn't, if you weren't able to budget those costs into the next year, right? So you go, all right, we can afford to do this this year, but all right, where are we gonna get the money next year? We got to the point, though, where, you know, we couldn't come to the table with a straight face with our bargaining groups and offer them nothing, or offer them a take-back, or offer them zero. I mean, the world is changing. We are under the same kinds of pressures that the private sector is, and that is, we need to retain the people that we have here. This is a very drastic measure. It's unfortunate that we have to do this. I would have to say that, you know, on my years and years on this Council, I'm hoping that this is not the legacy that I leave behind here, and that is that we're now using our reserves to pay salary. So I just, from my perspective, I think we need to be very cautious in this regard. This is not something that I came up with or I supported blindly. It's actually something that was, it's against every grain that I know, and that is, you know, I mean, my mother grew up in the Depression, you know? We're always constantly thinking about that rainy day, and constantly thinking about what if, you know, the bad things happen. So I think that, to my colleagues, I'd just like to say that as we move forward, we really need to be cognizant of what we've done. It is not something that you want to do every year, every two years. It's not something that you want to get in the habit of, using your savings to pay for recurring costs, because if they're there for a rainy day and you're using them for recurring costs, then you're never, you're not gonna have them anymore. So again, as we move forward, again, those are the pressures behind this decision. So you need to know that, at least from my perspective, it's not something I did lightly, it's not something that I would ever do lightly, and it's something that, you know, you gotta keep in the back of your mind as you're looking at us and you're judging the decisions we make, because clearly, as we all know, a budget is a reflection of the community's priorities. So, you know, we've done the best with what we have, and that's the end of my editorial.
Thank you, Mr. Gangona. Is there any other comments from the Council before I make a comment? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to address some of the concerns that I have regarding our Police Department. You know, last year, out of a staff of 88, they cut six positions from the Police Department. I would ask anyone in this audience to look at other cities, and you figure out the ratio of the number of officers as per citizens. Daly City has 109,000 residents, and you take that, and where we used to have a budget for 88 police officers, they're down to 82. Figure out how many officers per person that would bring towards Daly City. Figure out how many officers per person that would bring towards Daly City. In addition to that, the police department, as well as other police departments, have had issues with recruitment. No one wants to be a police officer nowadays, and on top of that is the retention of officers. We need to provide something for our Daly City police officers so that they will stay. To my knowledge, I believe the department came down to, from eighty-two to about seventy-eight, and then to seventy-six. Not good, folks, and if you say to yourself, when it comes to hard economic times and the city doesn't have the money to pay the salaries of police officers, I guarantee you, police officers will still be there working for you. What we need here in Daly City, we are in a structural deficit at this particular time. We are spending more than what we're bringing in, but it will take the collaboration of council, all staff that works for the city, and this you folks out there in the audience to come and say, how can we make this city better, whether it's volunteerism, or whether it's increasing our development and bringing more business into this city. The police department, and not only the police department, but staff have been down too long, since 2008, and subsequently, they've taken on the task. Whenever I come into Daly City, even I don't fool around, and I got stopped recently 'cause I wasn't wearing my seatbelt, but if you're the mayor, you know, it makes no difference. Nobody is treated any different, but they, people know you don't come to Daly City and cause any crime. So I think it was well worth it at this particular time to stop the blue bleeding, and that is what's been happening in our city. Our city needs to remain safe, so we will have to come together to find ways to pay and find money to pay the salaries of the folks who are there night and day to protect us. So that's my comment I wanted to make. All right, do we have any other comments before I open it up to the public hearing on this matter? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, as you stated, our public safety is important, and community members in Daly City would wanna know that, you know, that we have sufficient enough personnel out there, and you've stated it, and reiterating that there was a retention problem. And so it's important for us to ensure that we provide resources, and you've said it in the past, that, you know, in 2008, you know, they haven't had, you know, they actually took a decrease. So for me, it's important that our community is safe, and I think upon moving forward, looking at the ideas around, you know, building responsible development that provides more income and resources to Daly City, we have an opportunity ahead of us if we work collaboratively to bring in more resources to the city of Daly City, and that's what we look towards. We look towards moving forward so that we have more revenue, and that we are not in this situation in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have-
Mr. Buena Ventura.
I would just like to also, you know, support what the mayor and the vice mayor have said regarding our police, and I would actually invite the public, if you have the time, it would be good if you went on a ride along with our police officers. You really get to see the kind of work they do to help our community in Daly City, and it's just, it's a marvel to see them work, and to, as the mayor phrased it, we have had this experience of this blue bleeding that's going on, and I, I'm in the courthouse all the time as the attorney, and I, I see Daly City police officers with different uniforms now, with, they're now sheriff deputies, and it's, there is a wave going out, and we wanna stop that, and I think this is a good step to stopping that and keeping the people who know our community well our own blue Daly City. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Okay, at this particular time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. I have three cards on this matter. First card, I'll start with, with Ms. Gabriella Maxman.
Mayor, City Council, firstly, I would like to say that I'm very happy that the Police Officers Association in Daly City are getting a much-deserved raise. I know that they have struggled with retention and have seen their brothers move on to other cities after investing tens of thousands of dollars in their training. I know they've struggled with morale as well, feeling unappreciated for their tireless efforts. I do want to voice some concerns that I've heard from my neighbors. I live in Southern Hills, a more safer part of town, however, in reading neighbor posts on our ex-dorm, seeing an increase in crimes. Just last week, I was informed that the meth addicts who live next door robbed our neighbor of $30,000. We're all concerned that, one, using reserve funds or increasing the general fund budget by $7 million over two years to pay for current and long-term salaries will only put Daly City one natural disaster away from ruin. Two, a lack of a long-term plan hasn't been fully vetted in order to ensure that we can actually afford these increases. Three, based on the findings shown several months ago, Daly City is already on a trajectory to not meet its pension liabilities to current staff, and is already on the path of default on these payments in the next two decades. Four, salary increases to current staff will prevent the hiring of new officers due to lack of funding. For example, in the last budget, six positions were closed due to attrition, but now raises for current staff are being approved. Five, choosing to give a raise of one group versus another in the city seems unfair, considering that many of the city departments have been impacted by budget cuts. I understand that such decisions are complicated, however, to make a decision prior to the development of a new budget shows a lack of transparency, a lack of fiscal accountability, and a lack of sound financial judgment. If you have wealthy cities like Maraga, who's currently, that's currently on the verge of bankruptcy, then one should wonder if Daly City is next. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxman. Our next card on the subject is Ms. Sylvia Alvarez Lynch.
Let me just say that Daly City Police Department deserve great admiration, they don't shoot to kill, they don't have an accident like San Francisco does, and I, they have my greatest respect. The city manager and financial directors have had numerous public meetings informing us of the critical and dire status of the Daly City finances. Have you bothered to listen to the facts presented to you? Did you understand any of it? It doesn't seem like you comprehended the facts given to you. Mayor Sylvester, Vice Mayor Manolo, Council Member Buena Ventura, is tonight the payback for all the campaign donations you received from the police union? Our fire department raises next. I am shocked that Daly City is considering any pay raises under the existing precarious financial crisis Daly City is under. I have three questions. Where is the money for these raises coming from? We heard tonight that they're coming from the reserves. You know the money that we keep for an emergency like a major earthquake, mudslide, sinkhole, fire, and others, that, other things that may occur. The single police pay raise will leave us with only enough money to keep our city running for thirty days, thirty to forty-five, it said. Well, will the city continue the practice of giving the same cost-of-living raises to the rest of the city employees? And how many days of emergency funds will we have then? What happens when our reserves are gone, when we have no money to continue to pay these raises? What is the future of Daly City then? Will it be bankruptcy, a state takeover with our fire department outsourced to CalFire, with our police department outsourced to the county sheriff? What happens to the present employees' pensions? More importantly, what happens to the Daly City residents? Will all libraries, youth, and senior services be eliminated? Daly City cannot afford giving any pay raises now to any city employee for the long-term fiscal welfare of all of Daly City. All Daly City workers need to share in the pain equally. The people who voted you into office need you all to focus on solving our financial crisis. They don't need a youth board, don't need the street fairs and endless presentations and certificates for your friends and campaign contributors with monies we don't have. You, Sylvester, Manolo, and Buena Ventura-
Okay, Ms. Alvarez, you're gonna have to close for me, please.
...need to do the hard work that you were elected to do. Remember, you three were voted into office to provide leadership that is practical, sensible, and fiscally responsible. I do hope that you three can comprehend this reality. One thing the mayor, vice mayor, and council member Buena Ventura-
Ms. Alvarez, Lynch, would you please continue and, would you please finish, please?
...are talented and smiling and taking photo opportunities whenever possible. I hope all three of you-
Ms. Alvarez, and courtesy of the other folks who wish to speak, would you kindly finish up, please?
...to provide us with realistic, physically sound resolutions to get Daly City out of this dire financial crisis.
Ms. Alvarez, please finish up, please.
Remember, being a city council member does not mean-
All right.
-taking endless photo opportunities-
This meeting is now in recess.
...to smile and look happy.
Thank you.
Only real pageant beauty queens get to do that without having to deal with a Daly City fiscal crisis, political paybacks, and cutting of civil services. Do your job, which is to protect the welfare of all of Daly City, not just-